Good evening. I'm going to call the May 23rd, 2023 regular meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Present.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We wish to respectfully acknowledge that Niskuna is on the traditional lands of the Kaniki Haka and the Mahikanak peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have stewarded this land throughout generations. Okay, and we'll move on to committee reports, starting with Police and Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Our Police and Public Safety Committee was held on May 4th at 3:30. Under training, we have the, our department is conducting a department-wide range training, or did, May 24th to 25th. We're also taking on training for Officer Safety for Ambush Awareness and Preparation through the Police One Academy. And Detective Munger and Officer Wyman attended the New York State Child Passenger Safety Technical Conference, May 2nd through 4th in Lake Placid, and this training was grant-funded. Officer Doust continues to progress through the field training. Under Citizen Correspondence, ongoing, we have the Department of Police Department, and Supervisor Puccioni sent letters to the Department of Transportation regarding Route 7 and the traffic safety concerns. This letter outlined a number of fatalities over the last three years and requested analysis as to traffic calming measures. A new report was made by Norman Dutcher requesting radar sign on Grand Boulevard to monitor speeding concerns, and Detective Munger is going to request that through the Highway Department. Michael Fredette requested attention to an area on Knott Street. He was looking for some help with safety concerns for traffic, working with Scottsdale County, Officer, or sorry, Chief Koshin's looking to get a bar striping at the intersection with Knott Street. Marita Aguilar is requesting a stop sign at North Allendale at Becker Street, and we are looking to collect data for that area in order to make a plan. For town events, we have Coffee with the Cop at the Senior Center, continuing the third Tuesday monthly. And our next target Starbucks Coffee with the Cop will be June 15th at 1:00. And we're, again, thanking Chris Henry for organizing this. Our Drug Take Back Day was held April 22nd, and we had a thank you to the DEA and NCAP for their continued support with this program. And Chief Koshin also thanked Lieutenant Twitty for coordinating this event. We had a Niskuna Septa, a first responder event on May 6th, and Niskuna Town Hall from 10 to 12. We thanked Lieutenant Twitty and Septa for coordinating this very important event. It was a big success, and our students had a great experience. Our department supported the Pedal Paddle Run event on May 13th. They also supported the Bike Rodeo with Niskuna Public Library on May 13th. And Niskadae, obviously, our officers were there helping with community safety and keeping things rolling in the right direction. For School District, we're continuing our partnership through our Cops and Kids Reading Program and the Bus Patrol Program for monitoring people passing school buses. For resolutions tonight, we have a resolution to permanently appoint a police officer, Derek Breslin, and we'll be meeting again on June 1st at 3:30 in the Schaefer Room for everyone who wants to join.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Moving on to Community Programs.
Thank you, Supervisor. The Community Programs Committee met on Thursday, May 4th. We discussed our spring soccer program, which began last month, but had a wet start due to all the rain, so we extended the program by one week to allow for makeups, and we will officially wrap up tomorrow. We also had a rocky start to the season at the driving range, first because of all the rain, and then because of a technological issue with the machine that accepts credit cards. But everything has been fixed, and the range officially opened as of Niskadae. Hours at the range vary due to maintenance and group ball pickup, so we ask that residents, please check the Town website for available times. As the weather is finally starting to warm up, the Community Programs Department is just about ready for summer. Summer registration for our summer programs has been open for about six weeks, and registration has been very steady. The Summer Program booklet, which outlines all of the great opportunities we offer this upcoming season, is available on our website, niskuna.org/communityprograms, and that link also includes information on how to register for the programs. Over at the Town Pool, our maintenance staff has been busy sandblasting, pressure washing, patching, and painting the pool, and we are on track for a Saturday, June 17th opening this year. Thank you to Charlie Brigami and all of the pool staff for their work in preparing, and we do have a resolution on the agenda this evening to hire pool managers, lifeguards, coaches, snack bartenders, playground camp counselors, and independent contractors. And I look forward to welcoming the pool staff at their orientation in a couple of weeks. Thanks to our partners on the county legislature, we have once again been awarded the County Initiative Program Grant in the amount of $1,500. This grant funds our summer concert series, so of course, thank you to the county for their generosity in making the concert series possible. And we do have a resolution on tonight's agenda to accept that donation. This year's concert series kicks off next Thursday, June 1st, with a performance by the Doc Benson Band. Down at the Senior Center, it is business as usual. Book club, exercise programs, art workshops, and all of our other activities continue to be a success. We had a nice Mother's Day celebration a couple of weeks ago with a yogurt buffet. A defensive driving class was held a couple of weeks ago, and this coming Thursday, the seniors will be taking a trip to Proctor's. Also, the last resolution coming out of Community Programs on the agenda this evening is to accept a donation from Benson's Pet Center. Every month, Benson's has a Round Up the Change Program at the Register, and they pick a local organization to support with their change that's rounded up. So last month, they chose the Senior Center, and that money will go to support our lunch program. And our next meeting will be held on Thursday, June 1st at 3:00 PM in the Schaefer Room, and of course, everyone is invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskowitz. Moving on to Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Public Works met on May 4th. The first part of our meeting is the Highway and Facilities. That's led by our Highway Superintendent Ray Smith. So highway crews, as you know, continue to work on the roads. We're now using hot patch to patch potholes in the roads, and we are also now getting ready for paving. Summer's coming, so we have to get our roads ready for paving. We have a list of the roads that will be paved, and you can also check the website. We'll be sending out notices on the town email blast when certain areas in the community will be paved. So please look for that, because it may be in your neighborhood, and we want everybody to be prepared for that. Personnel-wise, Superintendent reports that his summer help looks good, and they're interviewing for one more position there. They were interviewing for one more position at the Highway Department to fill vacancies. These are all jobs that we've budgeted for and have some vacancies. The Parks crews continue to work in the parks. Shout out, as Councilmember Moskowitz said, to Charlie Brigami. He's the one that spearheads all of that, getting all of our facilities open. Our bathrooms in our parks all get shut down for the winter, so he has to go and then get them all fired up for the spring and summer. And he's a little shorthanded, so we want to say thank you to him, and the crews have been helping him get the parks ready for all the summer use. At our meeting, we also discussed the Fieldstone Trail System. We do a lot of discussion about our parks, because that's under Ray's department, Highway, Public Facilities, and the work that we're doing in the parks. I also took a tour with some of the town residents at the rec center, the pool area behind there. We've got some town land there, and we have some people that want to use that and make some trails in there. So we spent about an hour, two weeks ago, going over that. We're working on some logistics with that, because for us to access that, we have to cross over some national grid property, so we're working on that with our legal departments. That was also discussed at our meeting. Yard waste, that, we are on a regular schedule now for our yard waste pickup, so please, again, look at the website. It'll tell you all about that, what we pick up. Lawn crews have gone out and repaired all the damage. So if a snowplow driver damages your lawn, that snowplow driver and his wingman that is in that truck will then be out there patching it themselves, and we've completed all of that work. We've got, we discussed some resolutions. We're going to be surplusing some equipment from the Highway Department and from the Water and Sewer Department. That's on our agenda. Sweeping of the town roads, we have had a resident come to the meeting that asked about the sweeping of the roads. We do that at least twice a year. One resident was concerned that this actually causes damage to the roads, but it does not. It's there to pick up whatever salt and sand might be left over from the winter months, and most of the residents are very appreciative of that. And it's actually a safety issue for people that might be riding bikes and stuff like that on the roads also. So we do that at least twice a year. We go through the town and sweep the roads. Public Works, that's our Water and Sewer Department headed by our Town Engineer, Matt Yedo. At our meeting, we discussed our contracts for T-Mobile and some other cellular carries, cellular carriers on our water towers. We had some fence agreements, which we discussed at the meeting. Water and Sewer Maintenance Positions, we still had some open positions there. We put a sign out on the Troy Road. If anybody saw that, it's kind of been very actually effective that we are getting some people that are putting in resumes for the jobs just because they've seen the sign out on Route 7. We're trying every avenue we can to try to get employees on the internet, in the newspaper, posting a sign by the side of the road. Who knows what'll work, right? And if you know anybody, you can send them our way. We discussed our utility billing, which will be going out. Waste Water Treatment Plant, our organic waste program, is going well. Again, a lot of time kind of got, in the meeting, we discuss about employees there, because those jobs are sort of, they get to be very technical, and you have to be properly trained for these jobs. So we try the best that we can to use our in-house people to train people so that they can then move up and become operators of our wastewater treatment plant. So we're continuing to do that. At our Water Treatment Plant, that's our drinking plant, we discussed the upgrades project there and awarding some contracts to some contractors for some work that we're going to be doing at the Water Treatment Plant. Our next meeting is June 8th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you, Councilmember McPartland. And now for Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation.
Thank you, Supervisor. We last met on May 5th, and we will be meeting again the first Friday of June, which is June 2nd, and that meeting will be here in the Town Board Room. It'll be a hybrid meeting at 8:30 AM. Tonight, we will be honoring a longtime member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the Comprehensive Plan Committee, Keith Frary. He has been on the zoning board for over 13 years, most recently as a chairperson. So he has been a great asset to the town, and like many of our residents, probably 10 to 20 over the past 10 years, Keith is one of those 20 residents that really has had a great impact in shaping the policy of our town by being involved in the various committees, such as the Comprehensive Plan and the Zoning Board. So I do want to thank him for his dedication to the town and wish him the best of luck in his new residence. Also, John Hope, I want to thank him for stepping up to be the new Zoning Board Chairman. I'm sure he will do a great job. He's got big shoes to fill. And Katrina Pacheco for agreeing to be a full-time member. Again, these are very important positions, and the town really relies on their commitment and expertise. On April 29th, we had a very successful Arbor Day, giving away over 310 seedlings in just under 40 minutes. It was a very good turnout. That was our eighth successful Arbor Day. We're already working on getting additional seedlings for next year in response to the high demand that we've had this year and the past few years. I do want to thank the Tree Council, and particularly, for all of their work, the many volunteers that were present that day, and especially Carol Carey, who has been instrumental in making that a great day for the town for the past eight years. The town has also held two composting classes, one at the end of April and one in early May. They were very successful, sold out. The, all of the items that we had, given by us, by grant to give to our residents, were given away, and we're hopeful to do some more of these next year, because our residents were so interested in them. So we're working on another grant to do that, and we want to thank the organizers of these last events, especially Ellen Deveraux and Tricia Brigami. They've been a great help. Finally, the Town Planner informs me that the Comprehensive Plan will be releasing a survey to residents shortly, asking further input to that plan. As you know, that Comprehensive Plan is what the town is going to be looking forward to using to shape our town and our neighborhoods for the next 10 years. So please, you will get an email regarding that. Please pay attention to the survey and respond to it if possible. If for some reason you're not on our email list, it will also be posted on the Comprehensive Plan website, probably within the next week or two. I am also happy tonight to put forth a resolution appointing Clark Henry to the position of Planner One, as well as Laura Robertson as our Senior Planner. Both of these people have been a great asset to the town and to the Building Department. I hope that these new full-time positions will ensure their long-term commitment to the town, because they really have been a benefit. So thank you, and we hope to see you all on Friday, June 2nd at 8:30.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Rata. So good evening. It is always a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I would first like to take a moment to congratulate the Niskadae Committee on a very successful event. This event is all about community, and the day was filled with fun and fellowship. I'd also like to thank the many town employees in the Highway Department, as well as the Police Department, who helped make this day a success. The success of any organization and our town lies in the hands of its employees. And tonight, we have several resolutions to consider that will help ensure our town has excellent people driving our success. And some of these have already been mentioned in the previous reports, but I'd like to offer a little bit more detail for a few of these. So tonight, we're going to have the opportunity to permanently appoint Frank Basile to the position of Accountant. Frank is an integral part of the Comptroller's Office, as well as my office, as I have relied on him to run cost-benefit analyses, which help us make important policy-related decisions. We are very committed to making smart financial decisions and being good stewards of our tax dollars, and this is help, this is made possible by investing in quality employees, and Frank is one of those. In fact, we like to say he's worth his weight in gold. We will also be voting to permanently appoint Police Officer Derek Breslin, as Councilmember Brennan shared. Officer Breslin is a lateral transfer, and he is already applying his wealth of knowledge and expertise to mentor several of our new police officers. And this is exactly why we hired him, to bring his knowledge, his experience, and his leadership to our Police Department and help mentor and apprentice our new officers. Thank you, Officer Breslin. And I want to thank Chief Koshin and his leadership team, who continue to prioritize the recruitment and retention of police officers, especially those who are committed to my vision of policing in the 21st century. We will also be voting on two resolutions that will formalize a structural shift in our Building and Planning Department. More specifically, as Councilmember De La Rata mentioned, we'll be voting to move our current Town Planner, Laura Robertson, into the Senior Planner position, and our Assistant Town Planner, Clark Henry, to the Town Planner position. This change is aimed to improve the overall organization of the department, which I believe will increase the productivity and performance. As Town Supervisor, I am greatly invested in our parks, our green spaces, and our recreational areas. I aim to protect and enhance the environment, so we are also continuing to invest in our community programs and our parks. Each summer, we offer programming that serves hundreds of children and youth, from pre-K to young adults, whether it's our sports camps, our playground camps, arts and crafts, and of course, I must mention our Town Pool, which is home to our swimming lessons, our swimming and diving team, and also to adult aqua aerobics. Tonight, as Councilmember Moskowitz shared, we'll have an opportunity to hire employees, all of which are either young adults or adolescents from our community. This is a perfect example of how our town is committed to our community programs, but also to offering important employment experiences to our youth and our young adults. We are also hiring a new employee to fill a vacancy in the Parks Department. Our Parks Department, which currently has six employees, who are responsible for maintaining hundreds of acres of parkland, including boulevards, bike paths, and facilities. They do an incredible job, and we all enjoy our parks, and they are incredibly important to our quality of life. We also have an opportunity to invest in our Highway and Transportation Department, as well as our Water and Sewer Department. These folks are often our unsung heroes. These folks are responsible for the patching, paving, and plowing of our streets and roads, and ensuring that we have clean water when we turn on our taps, and we have a safe disposal of sewage. So we'll have an opportunity to vote on a resolution to promote Donald Weaver to Highway Working Crew Leader after his many years of exemplary service, and we are happy to have him, and we're happy to keep him. We'll also look at resolutions to hire new Water and Sewer Maintenance Workers, as Councilmember McPartland discussed. And again, these are some of our most important and overlooked employees in town, and we continue to be committed to recruiting and retaining great people. I'd also like to point out that we will be voting on resolutions to hire student interns. Student interns play an important role in our town, and I'm happy to offer youth and young adults opportunities to apprentice and experience mentorship in town government and public service. And finally, I would be remiss if I did not discuss two incredibly important resolutions that will be voted on tonight, and they have very important fiscal implications for the town, one of which will bring closure to four police officers who will now be placed in a similar retirement plan as their peers. This was a longstanding issue, in fact, over 15 years in the making, and I made it a priority to resolve. The New York State Retirement System has finally sent the invoice to settle this matter, and tonight, we will vote on a resolution to make a budget modification that will move $712,000 from the fund balance into another fund, which will allow us to pay the bill, so these officers can be placed in a retirement plan that is similar to their peers. Not only have we all agreed on this board that this is the fiscally responsible decision to invest in our police officers and our Police Department, but is the right thing to do. It will help avoid undue stress and uncertainty for the lives of those officers who have served our town faithfully and loyally and with distinction. Finally, we'll be setting new sewer rates. We'll be voting to set new sewer rates tonight. Now, this was discussed at several Finance and General Governance meetings, as well as Town Board meetings. And Town Board members have all stated that this is the fiscally responsible course of action, because there has been a significant budget deficit in the Water and Sewer Funds that must be rectified. As Town Supervisor, I will always strive to make the right decision at the right time and for the right reasons. The success of Town Hall not only lies in the hands of our employees, but it also lies in the hands of our Board members. So I look forward to the opportunity to vote on these resolutions this evening and continue to make positive progress.
All right, moving on to Privilege of the Floor. Bill Chapman.
Thank you. Bill Chapman, 1465 Clifton Park Road. I'd like to just say a couple of words about two of the promotions that you're doing this evening, Planner One for Clark Henry and Senior Planner for Laura Robertson. In the last few years, as one of the co-chairs of Complete Streets, I've had a lot of opportunity to work with both of them. And these two folks in the Planning Office, they support several committees in the town, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation Advisory Council, a Tree Council, Climate Smart Communities, Complete Streets, and also provide technical advice and input to the Town Board. I've had a little more experience with Laura. She's been with us a little longer, but Clark Henry has helped us out in Complete Streets. He has had experience in the private sector that he brings to the discussions. He also has data analytic approaches that he suggested on how to collect information that will be relevant to our decisions. He has alternative ways of looking at issues that he's shared with us, and I find him to be a good communicator and certainly provides a lot of support to Laura and to other people in the Planning Office. I would like to say Laura Robertson has also been a real support to Complete Streets Committee, but other, the committees in the town. She is very good at organizing an agenda for a meeting. She facilitates meetings, keeps on the agenda. She's a very good listener. Input that people have on suggestions on how to address things. She also, I think, is quite good at identifying key issues, where we sometimes, in Complete Streets, see a planning project that's going on in the town. She'll identify some of the issues, but she also is open to input that members of Complete Streets have. Good listener. I also have seen correspondence that she's sent out on behalf of the town to other government agencies, private sector, to people that are citizens in this town. And I think that's, it's very clear. It's very concise, and that's a, that's a real skill. Laura also is a real environmental advocate. If you want to do some more green, you want to plant some trees, you want to plant things, plants, she's at the front of the line, giving away trees. And really wants to see green space in our community, was a real supporter of the Natural Resources Inventory that Ashok, who's here with us tonight on the comp plan, worked on. So she's very much a supporter of green space. And also, she's working, you know, on the comp plans with a lot of issues, transportation, green space, environmental development, and I think she has a good vision, good professional experience. And I would say there's a Japanese proverb that I think about sometimes, that it's, "Vision without action is just a daydream, and action without vision is a nightmare." But Laura brings to her work at the Town Hall both vision and action. Helps us see where we want to go, but is also very good at some concrete steps that can help us get there, getting grants, working with other people, seeing solutions on how we might do things. And so I know you're appointing a lot of good staff tonight. That's a good thing. But I want to put in my two cents on these folks, because I work with them a lot on Complete Streets, and so I support your decision tonight. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I have Sui Gomes, 26 Bergen Place. So I just want to offer my sentiments on just some of the efforts of the Board. So fiscal responsibility, I think, is imperative to ensure that a town can fulfill its social and its economic responsibilities and making sound decisions, now builds on the town's potential for investments through their, for advancements through their present investments. I think these investments are in those who support our town's infrastructure maintenance, ensures our communities stay safe, and provides programming that nurtures our youth in a safe environment, which is a resource that every town desires. The heart of a town's ability to function lies in its many volunteers and employees, and I applaud the Supervisor and all supporting Board members, in its ability to make wise and thoughtful decisions to invest in these truly in- and thoughtful decisions to invest in these truly invaluable resources. I would also like to just make a special note to draw attention to the fact that through providing opportunities in the way of employment for our youth, we are also, we are also creating a pipeline for future leadership and occupancy of essential possessions in the town by, for these young adults, who have pride in their town and who have ownership in the improvement of their town. And I think it's important to let them know that they can bring their talents and keep them right here in Niskayuna and that they're welcomed, and that when we foster that through these youth programs, it'll kind of plant those seeds now. So just want to applaud you, and then I support your efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Joseph Drescher.
Good evening, Joseph Drescher. I live over on Pierce Road. I was here just the other meeting to discuss support for the firefighter tax exemption, so I just want to express my appreciation for your decision on that and gratitude on behalf of the local volunteer EMS community, as soon as I have a little extra time here. I also want to express some appreciation and gratitude for the summer programs we have here, and the fact that they're still continuing on and that they're being supported by this board. I grew up over in Avon Crest, and we had the summer camp program there, and I went every year, and it was the only thing besides Little League that took me out of my house and not playing video games all day. So it was very imperative and informative in my younger years, and then when I became a teenager, it was actually my first job as a camp counselor there. So, you know, as a kid, it helped develop me, and then even as a young adult, it helped teach me some skills, getting up, going to work. So there's a lot that can be learned from those programs, there's a lot that it offers young kids and teenagers in our community, so I do want to just, again, express my appreciation for those programs and gratitude that we're continuing them even today. And tying that in, you know, the parks that these programs are at are beautiful still, lovely, I still go over to the parks, Avon Crest, where, you know, I grew up, and some of the other parks to play basketball with my friends. So, you know, here we are in our mid-30s, we're not as good at sports as we were, and I feel it the next day, but I still appreciate all of that. So again, just wanted to express appreciation for you all and for the town. Thank you.
Good evening, and I apologize for not signing up. It's my first time at the Town Board, I did not know the protocol.
That's okay, can you just state your name?
My name is Ashok Ramasubramanian, and I reside at 2023 Alcona Court. With me is Lisa.
I'm Patrick.
And Jeff Corbin, also Niskayuna residence, and I'm here today to speak about the dangers posed to children and pets by lawn pesticides. And I'm a scientist, and I always separate fact from opinion, and I'm here fulfilling my responsibilities as a scientist to do some public outreach on the matter. The scientific community has been repeatedly told that the recent things like climate change and the biodiversity crisis are so bad is that we as scientists, like, we are sitting in the lab and not doing any outreach. And the fact is that lawn chemicals, including those used in Niskayuna, they cause many problems in children's and children and pets, and that list includes cancer. The following is the official policy statement of the American Pediatrics Association, this is the Association of Children's Doctors. Evidence demonstrates associations between early life exposure to pesticides and pediatric cancers, decreased cognitive function, and behavioral problems. So this is again, not my opinion, this is the official word of the American Academy of Pediatrics, association between exposure to pesticides and pediatric cancers, and these are, you know, children's doctors. And I have another study that talks about exposure to pesticides and what happens to pets, and this one, again, I'm reading the bit in, the use of professionally applied pesticides was associated with 70% higher risk of CML in dogs, 70% higher risk of CML in dogs. CML stands for canine malignant lymphoma. If you're a dog owner, it's definitely not something you want your dog to have. And when dog, and I've seen in my own neighborhood, dogs sniffing around people's yards, including cleared yards, and I try to tell as many people as I can that they should be really careful about this stuff, and again, this is not my opinion, this is hard science. I am aware that the town does not have any legislative authority to limit the exposure, but then here again, I want to repeat that my reason for being here is one of public outreach, and if anybody in the room wants copies of any of the research I've mentioned, I'm happy to provide. And we wanted the Town Board to be at least aware of what is, what is happening. I have 10 seconds left, and I wanted to quickly say that I did not know Laura Robertson and Clark Henry were up for promotions, but since I learned that they are, they're truly awesome. I support those two. Thank you so much for listening.
I'll just say one more thing as an ecologist. We all grew up thinking that the right way to have a lawn in a neighborhood like Niskayuna is for it to be green, look like Augusta National in the Masters Tournament. There's no reason for that. Diversity is beautiful in our neighborhoods, but also in our ecosystems, and so having one species of grass without clover, without dandelions, that's something that we've created for ourselves, but we can wind up creating a different vision. We're starting to see it with no mow May, but the more that we can do in order to make it normal to have a few other colors in our grasses and our lawns and our yards, and therefore have many more pollinators, healthier kids, and healthier pets is good for the town.
Just briefly, I do agree with you as the chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and we did address this problem a couple of years ago. I do feel that it's harmful to pets and children, however, and maybe the town attorney can correct me if I'm mistaken in this, it is, we're preempted from doing a whole lot of pesticides locally through the state because there's state regulations. So we did try to do everything we could, and we have a program that encourages people not to use pesticides on their lawn, and they have signs that they can put on their lawn that shows that they're, they're not using pesticides. But we do encourage all of our residents to reach out to their state legislators, because that really is the place that the lobbying needs to take place, so we can then regulate it here locally.
And Councilmember De La Rada, if I can quickly follow up to that, the town of Bethlehem has passed a non-binding resolution. It has no teeth, it's a non-binding kind of feel-good resolution that simply says, like, the people in the town have a right to good health, a right to clean water, et cetera. Can I email you that non-binding resolution?
Certainly.
Just to take a look?
Please do.
Thank you so much.
I'd also like to add the education, thank you, and it also starts with the conversations you have with your neighbors. I remember when we first moved here, our neighbors next door are former GE chemists, and we were considering using pesticides on our lawn to get rid of the dandelions, and he strongly advised against it for a range of reasons, which you discussed, and so we didn't. And not only did we not do that, we don't use pesticides on our lawn, but we also have an entire portion of our yard that's dedicated to pollinators, so grasses, clover, all the different plants that attract bees, and it's just what my husband calls his medicured meadow, and, and, and it's, and it's beautiful, and so I want to thank you for sharing that. Leslie Gold.
Leslie Gold, 1919 Potucket Avenue, and I'll actually add my support to the previous comments about not using pesticides on the lawn. I did it a couple of times when I was a new homeowner. My pair of neighbors mocked me for actually wearing a mask, but gee, the instructions said so, and that kind of told me right off the rip that it wasn't a good idea to use them. So my neighbors may not all be happy with the dandelions in my lawn. When I have time and energy, I do go out with a vinegar bottle and get rid of some of them, but I think we'd all be better off with more dandelions and less chemicals in our lawns. And I did want to speak in favor of the street sweeping program. I live partway down a hill. Winter, a lot of the sanding and whatnot stays kind of near where it was dropped. As spring comes and it dries out, it gets easier to move, we get a nice big rain, it goes down, and a lot of what goes on over the street goes to the basin, the catch basin, that's on the corner of my property, and you don't want all that stuff in the catch basins, that doesn't help the drainage system at all. So I really do appreciate street sweeping, thank you.
Are there any other residents present who would like to speak during Privilege of
Hi, my name is Vermaškov, I live at 5 Schreiber Drive. I, it's kind of, I judge my environment based on the experience that I have, and I usually rely on my five senses, right? We moved to this area in 2006, to the new Schreiber Drive building, this new neighborhood. Since then, I'm just gonna, I'm not trying to be critical, maybe a little bit, but not too hard. So since we moved 2006, I requested a couple of times, I wasn't really obsessed with that, to build a sidewalk so my kids can walk to the high school or take a ride on a bicycle, that never happened. Also, I do notice the trees that were cut down in this beautiful place right across from Mohawk, Mohawk, yes, right, that was a gorgeous forest, yes. The trees that were took down, the guys just did it a couple of years ago when they started building those apartments along the Mohawk River, this Aqueduct Park, my kids cried for days, we loved that park. We did yoga in there, we celebrated three times their birthdays, when we rented just a golf cart so we can get to the center of it. Somebody took care of that park, somebody cut the grass, the trees were beautiful, it was abundance of a lot of animals, and it's completely gone. The trees that were cut in the new building that was built in front of ShopRite, cut down as well. I mean, I understand and I hear that the trees are distributed, again, I base my experience on what I see and experience, and my experience is that you guys cut, like, to try to kill the trees, and there's not much done to make us walk from our home. My husband is paranoid, because a few years ago, a person who was working with him, a GE, was riding a bike, was killed in a car accident while he was on his bicycle. I would love to take my bike to work, but I have to ride a portion of it on Walltown Road, and my husband is just terrified that something will happen to me. I don't have any other ability to get to the bike path to get to work. And I, obviously, I haven't seen a lot of effort to change that suburban idea where you just have to be glued to your car, and we have to be connected to beautiful carbohydrates, which we're still going to keep burning and destroying the planet. The problem with it is very simple, once we kill this all, we're going to die as well, our children are going to die as well, and they're going to be dying this tremendously painful, very suffering, very exhausting pain, and we're going to observe it, or maybe some of us will be like, be dead, but none of the changes, not going to change anything. We are going to die from all these diseases, and we're going to die from everything that's going to follow, along with the planet. So I think that more effort can be put in to avoid that scenario, kind of, because every little bit helps at this point. I don't want to be glued into my car. So that's what I wanted to say.
Are there any other residents present who would like to speak? Thank you for your comments, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our resolutions. Starting with Resolution 2023-124, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan, will the clerk please read?
A resolution of permanently appointing an officer.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm excited for this resolution tonight. Officer Presland has been a positive influence on our force, he has got great community feedback for his efforts so far in our community, and I'm very excited for a long, successful career with our department.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-125, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a student worker in the supervisor's office.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-126, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of grant money for use in the Office of Community Programs.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is the resolution that I mentioned during my report, which funds our summer concert series from the Schenectady County Legislature, so we appreciate their generosity.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-17, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing student interns in various town departments.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just a clerical note, the one in the packet here, the resolution number's wrong, it's listed as 2023-17, it's supposed to be 2023-27.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
And this appears to be right in line with what two of our residents spoke about at the public comments, having volunteers, and the one gentleman who worked at the camps and gives them some incentive to stay in town and become more about, more involved in their town as they get older, so these are great things to do. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-128, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a Planner One.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just want to reiterate what Bill Chapman said, Clark has been a great asset, and I'm very glad that we're moving forward with this position, because I think it will give him some incentive to stay here for hopefully a lot longer.
Seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-129, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a person to the position of accountant.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think I already said it earlier, Frank is worth his weight in gold, and I'm eager to pass this resolution. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-130, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a grounds worker in the Parks Department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-131, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin, will the clerk please read? Resolution number 2023-131, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring an additional employee in the Park, Town Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-132, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a senior planner.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just briefly Supervisor, this was one of my first and most significant hires as chairman of the Economic Development Committee. And I'm happy to say I have no regrets. Laura Robertson has done a great job in our planning department. And I'm very happy that she's over approximately 10 years now, maybe just over nine. But this again is, is hopefully will give her the incentive to stay here for quite a bit longer and continue to be an asset to the town.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I fully support this also, having worked with Laura on the zoning board and the planning board and now on the town board. She's been a real, uh, she, uh, asset to the town. And not only in, as others have said, in her planning and the work that she does there, but also in the work that she does supporting our environment here in the town of Niskuna. And keeping us all very much aware of how we can do better to be better stewards of the environment. So I want to thank you for that and I'm very supportive of this.
All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-133, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring additional employees in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, as everyone has said, this is a great thing. We need these individuals, many of them young people, to work in our town in many of our programs that we have here. For some, it's their very first job. And as Mr. Drescher said, it's a great experience for them. And it seems like a big list, but all of these positions, we need people at. We've got a pool, we've got programs. So it's a great thing that we continue to do and pretty much most of these people on here are town residents.
All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-134, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a working crew leader.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-135, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a disposition of surplus equipment.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-136, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution adopting updates to the employee handbook.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-137, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a fence easement agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-138, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-139, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing an outside user agreement with the owners of 876 Pierce Road.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-140, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving the first quarter 2023 corporate utility warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-141, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign documents for the town to join the Finger Lakes Municipal Health Insurance Trust Medicare Consortium.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-142, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a chair to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Having spoken with John last week, I thank him for stepping up to this position. And for me, he's enthusiastically looking forward to it. So he has been on the Zoning Board of Appeals and now he's gonna be the chairman, so welcome him to that position.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-143, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a regular member to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I've had the pleasure of knowing Kate for a long time, 10 or 12 years. We've worked together on projects as, uh, she's an architect. She's also an adjunct professor at RPI where she teaches building code and zoning and planning. So I'm another member of our community who is willing to step up and serve the community. And I'm sure her professional background will be an asset to the CBA.
Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-143, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a person to the Historical Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-145, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the replacement of a transmission for the town-owned dump truck.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-146, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving and authorizing the supervisor to execute an electrical supply agreement for electricity with Constellation New Energy Inc. Corporation with Municipal Electric and Gas Alliance, Inc. pursuant to Genesee, sorry, County Bid Award and Contract.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Do you want me to read for you?
The resolution passes.
Let's see if I can get through the next one.
Are you sure? Do you, do you need some more water?
May I ask who, um, seconded that one?
Me.
Yes.
All right, take a minute.
We can pause.
Okay, let's try another.
Oh, let's try. That was so proper. Let us try another. Resolution number 2023-147, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution appointing three maintenance workers in the town's Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-148, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a wastewater treatment plant operator training.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-149, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution establishing new residential and commercial sewer rent rates for Consolidated Sewer District Number One and Consolidated Sewer District Number Six. And water consumption rates for Consolidated Water District Number One.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-151, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorize the acceptance of a donation.
Did I say 150? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped 150?
Oh, I read.
It's 150, but Michelle read 150.
I love you. All right.
Okay. We need, just need a second on that.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion on Resolution 2023-150?
This is the resolution I mentioned during my report from Benson's, their Roundup the Change program. Just over $3,000 to, uh, support our senior lunch program. So we appreciate their generosity and the generosity of everybody who shopped at Benson's.
Any other discussion? Just like to say thank you so much, Councilmember Moskowitz, working with Councilmember Brennan, also the senior center staff, Linda O'Brien in particular, um, Edie Canizzo, also with Lori Peretti. See a need, fill a need. We needed some help with our senior meal plan. And I brought you all together and said, hey, let's figure this out, right? We needed some help with our senior meal plan, and I brought you all together and said, hey, let's figure this out, right? Let's work as a team, and let's figure out how we can get some additional funding to help support our seniors, who are sometimes the most at-risk population in our town. And that's exactly what you all did. And so, again, thank you to Linda in particular, Councilmember Moskowitz, and also Councilmember Brennan. You worked together and you, you took care of it, so, um, thank you.
And Mrs. McPartlin also.
And Mrs. McPartlin. How could I forget?
Is this a financial donation, or is it?
It is $3,242.
That's great. And don't they also supply, do they supply service animals for the, or is that a different organization that does that? Service animals to the senior center for petting and alike? I thought we used to do that, maybe.
They do have some come down there, yeah. They do have therapy animals that do come down.
But that's not associated with pets?
No, not specifically.
Well, that's great. That's a great financial donation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1528.16]